...support for zoning Article One and urged the board to, quote, "look into removing the income cap criteria for the bylaw before the town warrant is printed," unquote. Committee also voted 501 to express support for the zoning Article Three, Entertainment, as, quote, "expanding outdoor entertainment is the goal of CEDC." Thank you for the opportunity to comment, unquote. Seeing that we have no official stuff left to do, Kathy, you want to walk us through the PowerPoint?
Just going to come to the podium because I think it might feel a little bit easier.
Should we dim the lights or what do you think?
Yep. Although I can't move the podium because it weighs a ton.
Mr. DeYoung is working his way over.
What is it hooked on? Yeah, all right, that sounds good. Thank you. All right. Now that we're all in order. We're here to talk about the zoning, potential zoning amendments for the 2019 annual town meeting. The planning board has five zoning amendments that we're going to be going over tonight. As Brad mentioned, the planning board members are, we're lucky to have a complete board tonight, which is a great, a great thing. One of the first things that we were looking at for zoning amendment was related to accessory dwelling units. I think a lot of you are aware of an initiative by the Smarter Cape to encourage towns to increase the number of rental units that they have by increasing the number of accessory dwelling units. An accessory dwelling unit is simply an apartment. It might be something that's located within an existing dwelling unit, attached to something, or it might be a separate detached, like a garage, apartment over a garage. One of the things we have difficulty with in Yarmouth is year-round rentals. We don't have enough of them, and the ones that we do have, because the supply is so low, is the rents are rather high, so it's a bit of a concern in town. The housing production plan that was completed for the town of Yarmouth also urged increase in rental housing and related to the fact that a lot of people who do rent are rent burdened, meaning they're spending more than 30 percent of their income on housing, which is considered a burden, a burden on their income. There is also a 2017 regional housing market analysis done by the Cape Cod Commission that forecasted that we were looking to have about 4,800 rental unit needs in the Cape Cod in the next 10 years. So that kind of was somewhat of an initiative for the planning board to take a look and see what we could do to reduce some of the restrictions on the ADUs to promote the creation.
We lost you.
I think I have both on. To promote the creation, no?
Just twist that one up towards it and speak right into it. There you go.
To promote the creation, thank you. I had both on a mic in this. To promote the creation of some additional rental housing. But the planning board also wanted to take into consideration some other issues specifically related to Yarmouth. It has to do with our current levels, high levels of residential density that we have on a lot of small grandfathered lots, potential impacts of adding a lot of accessory dwelling units to our single-family neighborhoods. We want to do things to ensure that if we're going to create affordable housing, that it stays affordable and that it is used year-round, and also take into consideration some, any potential impacts from increased wastewater loading on our water quality. So if we're increasing units, we might be increasing people, or we might be also increasing the level of usage from something that might be part-time to year-round use, which is going to be increasing nitrogen. So we wanted to be cognizant of that in the analysis that we did. Just so you know, a lot of people may not know that we do have an exist, an existing bylaw. It's not called accessory dwelling units. It's called accessory apartments. It's restricted to affordable units and family-related apartments right now, and they're done through special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. The maximum unit sizes are 800 square feet to keep them proportional to the, to the dwelling units. They're allowed on lots that are a minimum of 10,000 square feet. They require the recording of a declaration of covenants with the Registry of Deeds. But the affordable units themselves have some additional restrictions on them. They require to have a recorded affordable housing restriction at the registry. They require fair marketing requirements. That means that people have to go through a lottery or buy a name off of a ready renters' list, which adds some costs and some complexity to the issue. They set some maximum rental rates related to the affordable units, and there's also an income eligibility. You can't earn more than 80 percent of the area median income. So when the planning board was looking at possible changes to the bylaw, they looked at a lot of different things. One of the first things we did was take a look at how many family-related and affordable units we actually have created through our existing bylaw in town. We have 51 units, 44 of those are family-related, and seven are affordable. It should be noted that only one of those are actually on our subsidized housing inventory, meaning that applies towards our hope of having 10 percent affordable housing. So even though we have some affordable units, only one of them is actually on, on the subsidized housing inventory. We took a look at the Smarter Cape model accessory dwelling unit bylaw. We also did an analysis of different bylaws from other communities, what their existing bylaws are, and some proposed, proposed bylaws as well. And then we looked at some specific data related to the town of Yarmouth with regard to our residential lot size. We have a lot of really small lots. As I mentioned before, accessory apartments can be on lots as small as 10,000 square feet. Well, 80 percent of our residential lots would meet that requirement right now. We only have 13 percent of our lots would actually meet the minimum lot requirement of 25,000 square feet. Lot of our town is actually a minimum of 40,000 square feet now. And then we also took a look at residential density and compared it to also to other towns. Yarmouth is the second highest. We have 691 residential units per square mile. We're just behind Dennis, who has 732. But the next closest is Falmouth, which is with a rather large community, and they have 480 residential units per square mile. So you can see, we're very densely populated with our residential housing already. Planning board and staff also met with the Affordable Housing Trust to get their input, as well as the Community Housing Committee. Two of our members, Tom Roach is on the Affordable Housing Trust, and Tom Barron is on the Community Housing Committee, so we have a nice interaction there as well. Many members of the planning board, as well as myself, attended the housing listening session that was conducted, and then kind of taking all of that information and coming up with some balancing the needs of the community for rental housing with some of the impacts that might become associated with increasing our density. So taking that into consideration, the, the bylaw article that's amendment that's before you now does a couple of things to make it a little bit easier to create an affordable unit. One of them is it eliminates that deed restriction for, and fair marketing requirements. So no one has to go through a formal lottery. They don't have to go through the ready renter list, and they can just, if they happen to know someone, it gives them a little bit more flexibility. If someone's an income-eligible friend or someone that they know, they could rent their affordable unit to that person. Makes it a lot less complex. It also increased, based on some of the comments that we heard at the listening session and from some comments to the planning board, they increased the income eligibility from 80 percent to 100 percent of the local area median income to help expand the housing opportunities for our workforce. You know, there were some discussions about students with heavy loan burdens that aren't taken into consideration in the income eligibility. We matched the rents to the federal fair rental rates to ensure affordability, and that's the median area rental rates that HUD takes a look at, so it's kind of tying it back to our local area. We also looked at expanding the definition of family-related to include other long-term family-like relationships that might be caregiving or parental in nature. Someone has a goddaughter or something along those lines, they might be able to do it through the family-related. And it also offers some flexibility. If you can't meet all of these requirements, instead of requiring a variance from the special, from the zoning bylaw, it could be done through a special permit, which is a much lower bar to, to reach. And again, that would all be done through the zoning Board of Appeals. So in balancing some of these changes, the planning board proposed maybe increasing the minimum lot size from 10,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet. And then they also set a minimum unit size of 400 square feet. We retained the maximum of 800 square feet, but also tied it to 50 percent of the existing building size. Trying to keep it proportional to the building size as well as the lot size, because we have some of those smaller lots that we were talking about. So those are essentially the changes that are being proposed and the, and the process that the planning board went through, and I think I'm going to hand it back over to the chairman, maybe to open it up to comments.
Okay. Do you want to just hit the lights?
Yep.
There we go, turn that on. Hit the lights, we go from place to place. I normally allow Kathy, or wish Kathy, to continue, but I'm assuming most of you here are for the signage, so I'll keep going. No, okay. Okay, it's a rough crowd. All right. Boy, is that tough room to play. What I'm going to do first, when I see town officials and volunteers, I'm going to go, Mary, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Mary Wagon? You can introduce yourself and take a mic either up front or up at the podium.
Hi, so I'm Mary Wagon. I work for the town. I'm the Affordable Housing Program Coordinator for the town. And before I started working here, the town passed an accessory apartment bylaw for family-related units. It was expanded to the Affordable Housing Program. We've worked pretty hard on getting that up and running. For a long time, we were promoting grants of $5,000 to $10,000 to help with the, the construction. But again, what Kathy said was, we only got one of those units on the subsidized housing inventory. So what this, one of the recommendations I made to the Affordable Housing Trust when this first came up was to relax the zoning bylaws, to allow it to apply to other types of low, moderate-income households. So I think the planning board and Kathy, our town planner, has done a really good job kind of coming to a point that they would, these affordable units would still benefit low, moderate-income households, but it wouldn't be so strict so that we could get more units on. So like Kathy showed before, we've only, right now, we have seven affordable, affordable accessory apartments, only ones on our subsidized housing inventory. I think in total, we've, we've done like 12 or 14 special permits with the Board of Appeals on this while I've been working here. So for people that that works out for, that works out great, but these changes would probably allow more households access to this option. It wouldn't come with any construction money. That's the only thing. That's the drawback. We couldn't, our part of money that we get from US HUD wouldn't be able to, to apply to this anymore. But, you know, people, people know, you know, their family budget and their construction budget and can go forward for that. So I'm, I'm also here to, you know, answer any questions as comments come up, if you, if you want me to.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. I see our building commissioner here. Do you have any comments before we keep going? Not this time? I see two members of the ZBA. Would either member of the ZBA, Mr. DeYoung or our fun friend in there, Mr. Martin, either one of you like to speak? You're both here, so.
There's also Ms. Britta who's here.
I do not, I'm sorry, did not say Ms. Britta.
All right.
You're going to wait, okay. Would one member of the ZBA like to stand and speak?
Sure, I always like to.
Okay.
Was Mr. Martin here? He preferred.
I noted, Mr. Martin.
And I both like to speak, so I don't want to take his opportunity.
True words have rarely been said, so.
Good day, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Stephen DeYoung. I have the pleasure of chairing the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, although I think my tenure should be shortened by my age, but I'm a little younger than Tom, so I guess I can still work. The changes that you've suggested all seem very logical and sensible. The definitions that you've provided, I think, will make it easier for us as we contemplate accessory apartments coming into play before our board. I'm very delighted to see the additions under paragraph one defining what needs to be minimally, minimally contained within the apartment. I think the increase from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet is only logical. I think that that is a good, good offset to the other suggestions you're making to allow it to be a little bit more flexible. I'm delighted to see that the zoning board will be able to consider waivers of some of these many requirements. We have been confronted from time to time with petitions that we otherwise would like to grant but can't because it doesn't meet the square corners of this very specific definition that we've had to deal with today. Moving along with it, I think all the references from apartments to dwelling units are nice, but I'm not sure I understand the full need. They are what they are. We are seeing, as you well know probably from the petitions, that any of you may pay attention to it, are very exciting appeals board meetings from time to time. I'm sure you're all at home watching them very closely, and you'll know that we see more and more of these dwellings above apartments, so it's nice to see that we have suggested some of that within the body of each proposed changes. The definition of affordability, I think, is absolutely fabulous that we're seeing it move from 80 to 100 percent of the median. I think that anybody living at 100 percent of the median in this town is struggling to pay their month-to-month bills, and if we can offer them an affordable choice, that would be wonderful. I also think that this helps in some ways to deal with the reality of workforce housing needs in the town. In some instances, not as broad as we may want to consider going forward in defining work, workplace housing, but at least for the time being within the body of the changes suggested by this amendment, I think that it's a nice change that will again help us to be more flexible in that which we offer to people as we consider their petitions to allow for accessory apartments. Moving along for those people that are following me on the paper, I'm now on page four of six of the draft. The, I think I've just spoken to the 80 percent to 100 percent, so that doesn't need a restatement. The eligibility requirements have been very well protected and adhered to by the town via stringent and appropriate enforcement by our town bodies, persons that administer this plan. And all over, altogether, I certainly agree with the amnesty provision now being struck since it's outdated itself. So I applaud all of you that have worked so hard on these proposed changes to this very important section of our bylaw, one that is going to become ever more important moving forward as we grapple not only with affordability in this town, and mercifully, we're going to now add to our stock just down the road, but also as pressing, and perhaps we can look at in some future year, some recrafting of our bylaw to deal with workplace housing. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and again, I applaud your efforts.
Thank you. I flinch every time I hear workforce housing. One April, we went zero for April with that word on the bylaw documents, and I still flinch. Again, the ZBA, any other members before I open up the? No, no, no. Mr. Saban, you're the last member here who usually has a volunteer title next to his name. Would you like to speak before I open the floor?
Do you have anybody else? I'm just another citizen, but I'll come and speak.
I doubt that, sir.
I too like to speak, as does, I guess, just a couple of things.
Please introduce yourself.
First of all, I'm Jim Saban, Yarmouth Port. I've had the opportunity to sit there a few times in my past, so I appreciate the work that you put into these types of bylaws. I guess my first comment is that really this isn't an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. It's an affordable accessory dwelling unit bylaw. By any measure, Cape Cod Commission, housing, you name it, they all say we lack adequate inventory of one and two bedroom units Cape-wide. Yarmouth is no exception. If we're trying to address the issue of housing by putting restrictions on the income and the amount of money an individual can charge for rent, it takes away the incentive for me to create such a thing. As an example, it was just said earlier that we offered $5,000 and $10,000 to people to create these things. We got one. Without a financial incentive for me to invest in making an accessory unit, I will not do it, and I'm not unusual. I think we all understand that supply and demand works. Economics 101, I think most of us who, well, understand economics would understand that if we can increase the supply of housing units, the rents will stabilize and ultimately decrease. Under your bylaw and what you're proposing, I would suggest that you're probably going to get the same results that you got previously when you dangled $5,000 and $10,000 in front of people. You won't get it. So if we're serious about addressing the issue of housing in this town, I strongly recommend that we take away the, the income requirements. Number one, I can give you an example of our particular company. Well, we have individuals in our company that, that have paid $20, $25 an hour and can't get an apartment, because when they make a phone call to get one, it's gone. The supply is limited Cape-wide. We have an individual who's looking in Plymouth, and if she goes to Plymouth, she won't be coming back. So we're trying to keep people here on the Cape, and I think one of the things we need to do is address the supply side, and as a result of addressing that, we're going to be able to work on the, the amount of money that people rent. So I applaud you in trying to address this, but I would suggest that you change it if this is what you're seriously wanting to do, is address affordable housing, then call it what it is. It's affordable accessory dwelling units, not accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units, you should not put caps on the amount of money that I can rent my home for or my accessory unit. The other areas are already restricted, your concerns about density, et cetera, those are covered in your bylaw already. But by putting income restrictions on individuals and the amount of money that an individual can rent the units for, your result is going to be poor. So I would suggest that either we change the name of this, or we get rid of those restrictions on income and, and the amount of money an individual can rent the unit for. Otherwise, you just wasted your time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a point of clarification?
Point of clarification, yes.
Jim, if I may, I just want to clarify your comment about income restrictions. Are you referring to income restrictions on the landlord or the tenant?
Both.
Rent or income eligibility?
There should be no, if you're trying to increase the, the number of units.
I understand your point, but I just want to clarify, there should be no, there should be no income restriction on, meaning the rent that can be charged, correct?
Correct.
And that the person who wants to become the renter should have no test for income eligibility?
If it's an affordable housing unit, then you've got to apply those. So what I'm saying is if this is an accessory dwelling unit, then no, there should be no restrictions on either. An individual who makes $22 an hour would not necessarily qualify, and that's qualified workforce people that will leave the Cape because they can't afford to live here, because they're, they're that, you know, there's those people that they make just a little bit too much money to qualify for benefits, but don't make enough money to live day-to-day. What are we doing for those people? We're driving them off the Cape.
Jim, she just asked for clarification.
It was just a point of clarification. Thank you.
I just, I just want to move along to other people, and then we'll have a discussion. Does anyone else want to make a different opinion than what Jim just made before we keep hacking at the apple? I've seen you a couple of months ago speaking on this. Is it going to be different than what he just said?
Yes.
Okay. Please come on back up, introduce yourself again.
Ryan Castle on the Community Economic Development Committee, and then also Yarmouth Port resident and run a business in West Yarmouth. So first of all, the fact that you're going to make them certify every year is unconscionable. You're going to make someone certify every year on their income, which means that you are now fixing someone in their job and not allowing them to go get a better job because they're going to lose their housing. Think about that. As an employer whose employees, 10 people in Yarmouth, that's unconscionable that I can't go recruit another employee or give my employee raise because they're worried they're going to lose their house. That, that is not keeping people here. That is not keeping people here. So that was the different point. Now, since I'm up here, I do want to speak to his because there is some specifics, right? Since I am one of the probably few in this room with children, I want to mention the cost of a single mother with a child who makes perhaps $70,000 a year. They're paying $1,000 a month in childcare. They're paying $300 a month in student loans because they didn't want a $50,000 a year job, they wanted a $70,000 a year job. They're essentially bringing home as much as the $50,000 a year job, but they don't qualify under your definition, right? And if you think childcare at $1,000 a month is unreasonable, childcare and student loan debt are the largest cost outside of housing, and at some levels, they reach over housing now. I mean, me personally, me and my wife, we pay $1,400 a month for one child in childcare. And so that's not unreasonable, thinking that someone could be paying that much and have that much on housing. So that, the other thing is my wife is a nurse at the hospital, and she has plenty of friends in their 20s that would not qualify under the income limits, that won't break up their boyfriends because they can't find housing. So you are [BLEEP]ing women into relationships because they don't know where to go because you're not creating enough housing. And then so because this income limit is causing that problem, so I would just encourage you to really look at that. Thank you.
That is a powerful statement. I'll leave it at that. I don't know if it's true, but, okay, fixing women into a housing situation, okay? Does anyone else have something different to say besides?
It is every night, so.
I agree. It's just, over the deck, over the 25 years I've served on this board, rarely have I heard such a cutting-edge comment, that's all. Very good words. Leave it at that. Has anybody else have something different to say than what we've just heard so far? Okay, I'll open up the floor. Any, Miss, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure.
Well, sometimes when we have hearings like this, we keep chopping the apple with the same incident. What we hear now is what this, the group so far would like the cap taken off income, and they would like the, some of the variables looked at to be changed. Is there something different that you'd like to speak to?
Yes, thank you.
Please, just introduce yourself and.
Thank you. I'm Jan Hyveley. I'm a member of the age-friendly Yarmouth team, and I live in West Yarmouth, and I used to be a planning director in Minneapolis.
I'm so sorry.
So, yeah. At a housing forum, as Mary Wagon to tell you, a housing forum that we had in the spring of 2017, we broke the group up after we talked about different things, and there were different categories of interest. One of the categories was thinking about accessory housing. That was the, that was the speaker who got the most people of those in attendance show up for questions and interest. This is strong interest, I believe, in this, and of course, it's really essential for support for aging in place. This, this document is a national document put out by AARP, the national, and the National Building Museum. It's called Making Room: Housing for a Changing American, and it all is related to particularly older adults and the need for aging, caregiving at some point, or, or the possibility of sharing housing for people who will at least be able to shovel the, the driveway, which I have a problem with in the last 24 hours. But it's, is really kind of icy out there now. So I have two, this is wonderful, what I, I think that every one of the changes that you're recommending actually is excellent. I have, I quibble with, with two small, well, one, two things. One of them is that you say that kitchens shall include at a minimum a sink, microwave, stove with hood, and minimum 10-foot cubic foot refrigerator, freezer. I just want to say that right now in New York, you can go into an apartment, a number, many apartments, and find out that you don't have a stove, you only have a microwave. So when you're looking at a 400-foot apartment, I think it's pretty logical for people to also not have to have a stove, but, and then there's the fire danger that goes along with a stove as well. The other thing that I would, was somewhat concerned by is the extension up to 15,000 is the minimum lot footage. I just think that there should be some exception because that's an implication that the area of the accessory unit is extending substantially up to half of the size of the house, original house, but many of these units may, it may, it may go up above the existing ranch house, for example, or it may be on the lower level going down, and it, I don't see really what lot size has to do with that. And it seems to me that when you get over 10,000 square feet, that that's, that really is a pretty big, that, that in itself raises the income of the owner, or suggests that the income of the owner would be higher. And I think that the purpose here is to make it, make aging in place from my perspective, which is my sense of purpose, that aging in place actually would be easier to share. I moved to Cape Cod because of a cousin in Orleans who required caregiving, and we were able then to change the parts of her home so that she was able to have a person living in an accessory unit. I now am a caregiver for a cousin in Chatham. It's one of these houses, it was started in 1760, and it's had addition after addition. Well, one of those, the original house is absolutely perfect size to be. Well, one of those, the original house is absolutely perfect size to be created as an accessory unit. It will not change the look of the house even, and that's what we're planning to do. But in that case, for example, the square footage of the entire property would not match the 15,000, so it would be a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just thinking, Chatham has sewers, though, it's an advantage.
True.
Yeah. The floor is open. Anybody else want to speak to the, Ms. Britta? There we go.
Good evening. My name is Susan Britta, and I live in West Yarmouth. And as you know, this wouldn't be Yarmouth unless there was someone that was going to speak in opposition to some of the comments I've had this evening. My first comment really is a challenge to the board to, it's a challenge and a question, really. What do you envision the housing stock in this town to look like in 20 years? And how does this amendment play into that vision? I don't know what your vision is. I know what my vision is, and my vision is that this amendment would damage what I think my vision is of Yarmouth in 20 years. The other comment I want to make is that I see a lack of, tremendous lack of data to support a lot of things that have been said this evening. There's no data to even indicate that the current system is not working. There's no data to indicate that all the variables that have been mentioned will improve use of the accessible housing program, accessory housing program. There's no data, and that traditionally, I think, in my dealing with the town, has been a chronic problem with the town, that the town makes short-term decisions, they do not take a long, long-term view of the town, they don't take a long-term view of the decisions they're making, and they're making these decisions without hard data to support them. I use as a great example the situation the town finds itself in right now with the school. That decision was made short-term, no long-term, thinking about the implications, and I would challenge you to think the same way about this amendment. This amendment will have a profound change on the housing stock in the town of Yarmouth, and I'm not sure it's a good change. It's a decision that's quite frankly being made with the overarching lack of knowledge about what's going to happen once we get the wastewater treatment program up and running, and how that's going to affect the town. I don't think this is a time at all to be making zoning changes until we get that program up and running and see the impact that it's going to have on our housing stock. It is, these are long-term decisions, they're going to have big impacts. This is not simply changing 10,000 square feet to 15,000. I can't imagine how that's going to impact anything, reducing income requirements or eligibility. It, there's no data to show that any of that is going to make a difference. We've had the program running now, it has not been, as Mary said, there's not many units being snapped up under this program. Does this change any of that? I don't see any information to show that it will. And then as civil servants, I would ask you, what do we say to the, to the young married couple that finally cobbled together a down payment for a house in a neighborhood that is zoned now for single-family housing? What do we say to them? What do we say to the retiree that finally retired to the Cape, bought their dream house in a neighborhood that's zoned for single-family housing? And now we're going to change the rules midstream based on what? A suggestion that our program isn't working? We don't know that it's not working. It seems to be working to me. So I challenge you, I implore you, to table this amendment, to wait at least until we have some more data and experience with the wastewater treatment plan to see how, program to see how that's going to impact on the town and its real estate values. There is no doubt in my mind that this plan, this proposed amendment, will drive down real estate values. And that, I can show data, I can get data for you to demonstrate that. Do we really want that to happen in a town now that's struggling to come up with revenue? I think it's premature. I think you have to be very, very cautious about entertaining a massive zoning change like this in the absence of not only data, but the long-range implications of the wastewater treatment plant. One of the benefits, as we all know, is we hope it attracts high-quality economic development. That will have a big impact on what this town's going to look like, who's going to live here, the jobs it creates. I think it's premature. I don't think we need this amendment now. I think what we have is working, and I would urge you to, whatever you need, table, postpone, set aside this amendment until we have a broader picture about what the town's going to look like in five or 10 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Britta. Anyone, I see a hand in the far left corner, my left corner, I see a face.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Restusha. I live in Yarmouth Port, and I'm a former member of the Historic Society here, and was very honored to have sat on that board. I wanted to speak just very briefly, and forgive me, I haven't done this in a while. I would like to speak basically to the gentleman behind me who made the comment about the women, and to this other nice lady who was talking about the data and all. This is a human issue. This is not about necessarily data and all of the other things that go along with it, which I'm sure there's a lot. As a community, one of the reasons I like living in Yarmouth is because we care about each other, and because our police department is so proactive. And knowing personally some of the people who live in the woods in West Yarmouth underneath the tarps, one of them who recently passed away at 31-years-old named Brittany, her body was found, it was a drug overdose. This amendment of accessory dwelling units speaks to a much bigger problem than just me, and I'd be real happy to be able to have it because my husband and I are both disabled, and we're going to need somebody to live with us to help us if we want to stay here. We can't do it any other way. But it's a bigger problem in that we need more housing for these people. And when you see people, as he said, making $25 an hour, and believe me, I am on Craigslist every single day reading these people who are looking for a room, who can only afford $150, $200 a week, and that's a lot of money, that's $800 a month. We need to do something to change the dynamic, to come together as a community and help our elderly stay here, and help these people who are running in the shadows, which is what I call them, shadow people, who are living on that little edge between being able to pay the $1,300, $1,400 a month and having nowhere to go. So if the accessory dwelling unit is going to help alleviate some of that problem so that more Britneys don't get found underneath a tarp in the woods, I think we need to do it as a community, and it's a human issue. So, thank you very much for your moment.
So Dawn, you're in favor of the bylaw?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else? Mary, before I get you back up, anybody else who hasn't spoken yet, even though I'm afraid of Mary Wagon, I admit it. Go ahead. Mary, please, go ahead.
I kind of did want to be the last. All right, so I just wanted...
You did it first.
So I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments from Mr. Castle. So we do ask for annual recertification, so we check into that tenant is still there. We don't do any relocation. There are some housing programs that if you become over income, you are asked to leave or your rent goes up, but this is not this type of program, neither...
Certify, that's why.
Right, and it's a self-certification, so, so they are not asked to leave if they're, if they're over income. That, in the paragraph above on page four, talks about seeing the lease annually, and that gives us contact with the owner of the property, and then we ask for income certification of the tenant, that gives us contact with the tenant. So between those two things, we know, we can certify that that tenant is really there, and the owner is still there, and that there's still a lease that shows us the rent is still affordable. So that's the purpose of that, it's not to relocate anybody.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Williams, once you get over your carpal tunnel, sit down there.
Very good comment.
We'll move on to article two. Mr. B., could you grab the lights?
I got it. I'm over, I'm already over here.
Thank you, both of you.
So the next zoning amendment is relatively minor, and it's related to signage. Right now, electronic messages, and that's kind of like what you see at D Y, the sign in front of D Y where it has the LED lights and electronic message centers, are only allowed for time, date, and temperature. Based on some different inquiries that we've received, taking a look at whether we might want to allow LED for certain things that change on a regular basis. One of the things that comes up all the time is gas prices on freestanding signs. Somebody has to go out there in the winter and change the actual gas price signs, and it's a little bit, a little bit outdated, but it's also a little bit of a safety issue. And also allowing to have electronic messages on our community information boards. One of the community information boards we have is in front of D Y, the other one is in front of the Chamber of Commerce, and they were hoping to look at possibly having some type of electronic messaging. Gets the information out there more updated and more frequent than what might be available if they have to go out there in the winter and change things around. The other edit that we're looking at is looking at dimensional requirements for drive-through menu boards for food service. We allow them now, and it's done through special permit, or variances, because we don't have any specific size requirements on them right now, so we went around and did a bunch of measuring at all the different menu board signs around town, and set a maximum of 66 square feet, 10-foot wide and 12-foot above the ground, making sure that the sign is directed towards the drive-through traffic, and then screening it from view from the street. So those are the changes that are being proposed for signs.
Kathy, if you just want to flick the light up if you want to stay there, but if you want to flick the light up, I'll ask, I'm seeing if there are any town employees still here, no. Z B A, we still have three members. Any of the Z B A want to speak to this before I go to the general audience? Mr. DeYoung?
Good evening again, members of the board, and Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am Steve DeYoung from the zoning board, once again before you. The issue on the gas signs, thanks for bringing something to it, but I'm not sure I understand the value of it. We have been asked time and time and time again to give relief concerning the message signs that are affixed to the pumps themselves that can be changed from indoors. It makes logical sense to me that we would allow particularly gas stations to do that because everybody wants to know what they're going to be paying for the price of gas, whether it's today or tomorrow or the next day because it changes so frequently. So I'm not sure I understand why we don't allow it at the pump, and the only comment I would make on this is that I just don't think it goes far enough. We're talking about freestanding signs, the one that comes most, well, several come to mind, so I won't single anybody out, but we on the board have been asked to consider special permit grants for this in the past, and always have to say no, we're sorry, we can't give you any relief because our sign code doesn't provide for any relief. So if you're not going to be able to do it with this town meeting, which I would understand, I would ask you in the future to consider possibly allowing particularly gas stations, which seem to be the only real affected people with this no messaging sign prohibition. On the rolling sign in front of the D Y High School, I'll defer to everybody that drives by it and sees the rolling message as to whether or not it distracts them. I think it's wonderful to put community data out there in any way we can, but rolling signs always concern me when motorists are driving by trying to read them. So I know that when I drive by that area, I always want to see what's on that board just as I'm trying to turn into a Dr. Mithyitis' office so I can have more dental work done and find myself driving off the road as I try to do it because I want to read the message as bad as I want to find his driveways. So, you know, that, that I defer to you as planners, but from a common sense and practical standpoint, to me, a rolling sign, when we add too much information on it, becomes problematic to drivers in particular, so. But I would ask you at some point to consider the gas station signs as they relate to on the pump information, which is not currently allowed in our town. Thank you.
So just to clarify, you're looking for pump toppers that go LED pump toppers on top of the pump, not just the LED changes on the freestanding sign?
No, I think you're wrong. Are you asking me to clarify? And I'm walking away from the mic, I apologize for that. What I'm asking, what I'm suggesting is the information that allows for remote changing of pricing rather than having to go out and put placards on or something else. We see them in other towns where they're more informational without having to get out of your car to read them, or hope that you can, you know, maybe not read them from the, you're almost prohibited from reading them from the street because they're just not really visible.
Gas toppers, on top of the gas pump?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on signs? Yep.
Okay, the third amendment is basically to try and make it a little bit simpler for existing businesses to have some type of outdoor entertainment. Right now, when someone comes and they want to have outdoor entertainment at a restaurant or a hotel, they're required to get a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a public hearing with a butter notification, but then they're also required to go to the Board of Selectmen for an entertainment license, which is also a public hearing with a butter notification. So what we're trying to do here is eliminate the need for that special permit for the outdoor entertainment, such as concerts, dancing, exhibits, cabarets, or public shows, if all of the following are applicable. So it needs to be a business that's located in the B1 and B2 zoning district, the entertainment would be accessory to an allowed or permitted use, so it's not, that's not the sole thing that's happening there, it's accessory to a restaurant or a hotel or something like that, and then an entertainment license is obtained from the Board of Selectmen. So just trying to simplify that process for people who want to have outdoor entertainment at their business.
I see a town employee back. Mark, do you want to speak on this before I go to the Z B A? Z B A, any comments? No. Opening up to the floor, Mr. Saban, hand up.
Just a quick question. How does a...
You got it, I'm sorry, sir. I know there are people home dying to hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
My wife, when am I coming home for dinner? Just a quick question, how would this change affect, for example, the cultural center, which is in a RS 60 zone?
RS 40.
Is it a RS 60?
RS 40.
40. Okay. Still RS and not a B1 or B2?
Correct.
I don't think it, I don't think it would apply because this is just for the, we started at, we wanted to start out in the B1 and the B2 zoning districts and simplify it there. It actually came about because of a variance that was requested for the golf course, the Bass River Golf Course. Unfortunately, that was a, that's a lawfully pre-existing use, but, so it's not something that's in the B1 and B2. This would not address them either, but it brought it to the attention of the planning board of trying to simplify that process.
So it would have no effect?
No effect.
Okay. Anyone else on signage? No. Moving on to the great world of boating.
Yeah, this would be fun.
Still rich.
I don't know how many of you are boaters or have boats and store it on your property, but right now, the current bylaw allows you to store your boats only behind the front face of the building. What this is trying to do is because we're a seaside community, we have a lot of people who do have boats, and it's very difficult on some of the smaller lots to get their boat behind that front face, is to allow an exception, which basically would be, you would have, be able to have one registered boat to be stored anywhere on your property as long as the location doesn't interfere with traffic or fire safety, so, you know, the fire trucks can still get to your property, and also you maintain adequate onsite parking. We don't want people to park their boat in their driveway and then park their cars on the street because that's something that I think would be disruptive to people's neighbors. One of the things that came out of some discussions with the Finance Committee when, when the board went before them, was whether any restriction on the length of the boat should be considered, and also based on other discussions with town staff of whether this is something that we should allow in Old Kings Highway or the RS 40, which is the Bass River Historic District. So that might be something, if anybody has any comments on that, I'd love to hear some, some input on that as well as the board.
Mr. Building Commissioner, this is Ray Daniel, would you like to speak first on this? No. Okay. Z B A, any comments? Ms. Britta? Are you speaking as a Z B A member?
No, should I wait till then?
Please. Okay. Now, just open to the... Now, just open to the, if there's no other town official, Ms. Britta, speak as a resident, please.
Okay, just two comments. One is limiting it to one boat is really, doesn't make too much of an impact because most people, unless you're super rich, only have one boat. One of the suggestions I made to Kathy was, at least in my neighborhood, the way the neighborhood set up, you have your house and you have your driveway next to the house, so there's really no opportunity to bring your boat back to the house. So, if you're stuck with the notion that you've got the driveway and the boat in the driveway, why doesn't the town consider charging a $50 per boat or a $50 fee for each resident so they can keep their boat in the driveway so it is visible? Kind of a visual pollution, but at least the town can make some, get some revenue from what is basically storage. People were storing their boats in a neighborhood that right now says you have to do, if you're going to do it, you have to do it in back of the house. If you're going to do it in the driveway, $50, whatever the fee the town wants to do, but it might be an opportunity for the town to get some revenue from people who should really be using a boatyard to store their boat and using their driveway. And if the town is going to tolerate that, they should get some revenue for it. That's my, that's my comment.
Anybody something different, sir? Just come on up and introduce yourself, please.
My name's Scott Ober. I live in West Yarmouth, and my wife and I just went to the boat show and just bought a boat. One of the things that I always find fascinating about rules and regulations is they're only as good as you can enforce them. And I came here tonight thinking there was going to be more restrictions on storing a boat on your, on your property. And what I didn't realize is the requirement that the boat had to be behind the face. And I drive around town all the time, and there are boats in driveways, and I think this is, this is great. I would respectfully disagree with Ms. Britta. The town should not be charging homeowners to store their boat on their own property. So, I think it's a good, good decision.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Martin?
Dick Martin, South Yarmouth, and this is not for the Z B A or anything. Just, I would concur with what I guess what came up about a size limitation. There have been some Queen Mary type of yachts occasionally in properties, and I do think that that gets a little too out of hand, so I think there should be some kind of limitation on that. Visual pollution, maybe. I mean, everybody's doing it. It's hard to, it's hard to enforce, so I can see the reasoning for making it easier. My boat actually does go to one of those boatyards and sits there as opposed to in my driveway, and I think that looks a lot better in terms of the neighborhood character in general. On the other hand, we are a seaside community, and a lot of people have boats, and a lot of people don't have the money to store them, so I can understand the reason for it, but I think there should be some reasonable restrictions on it, especially in terms of size.
I'm afraid to ask because I don't know if size matters, but do you have a foot length in mind, since we're always looking for feedback?
You might want to ask the gentleman that just bought the boat.
Right. We want to make sure that the boat length is. Oh, my, which boat?
Do you want to get back to Mike? We just, again, the financial people upstairs said they were concerned, and we're just taking feedback, which is what public hearings do.
One thing you just might consider regarding, rather than just putting a length on it, is whether or not it's trailable. There are big boats that can be put on big trailers, but the Queen Mary can't be trailered. It has to be, so that might be the way you would want to word a restriction. I wouldn't put a foot length on it.
Then you should comment. But just out of curiosity, what is the length of your boat? 24. All right. Thank you, sir.
So, that applies if you're a stinkpotter, but if you're a sailor, which I happen to be, I happen to have a boat that is not necessarily trailable because it's a sailboat, and they have different transportation requirements than a typical, I can't put my boat in and out of the water every weekend. It goes in the water and it stays there. So, those types of ideas are, you know, trailable wouldn't work. With regards to charging a fee, if we start charging a fee for boats, next thing you're going to do is start charging people for parking their own car in the driveway. So, let's not get crazy with charging fees to people, please.
Just an idea by one resident, do you have a length in mind, Mr. Saban?
Well, my boat's 35 feet, so.
There we go.
Over 36 feet.
36 feet, thank you. Anybody else who has something different to say?
35 is what I was thinking as well.
Okay. There we go.
I keep mine in a marina.
I love feedback. Anything else seeing, is it on this amendment, sir?
Name's Michael Layden. I'm from South Yarmouth, and I just need a clarification. Does this also consider kayaks, canoes, rowboats, that type of thing?
I don't know.
There's a lot of people down here that are, I'm in a couple of different boating clubs, and I personally have a bunch of kayaks and canoes that I have relatives come down during the summer, and I need to put them in. They're not going to fit inside the garage. They're out behind my house on the sore horse, isn't covered. So, would that be something that?
You can't put those behind the front face of your building?
Oh, yeah, you can put them behind, but you're limited into one boat.
No, no, no. The ones in front is limited to one boat. You can store as many of those boats behind the front face as long as you're not becoming a boat storage facility, a reasonable amount of your own boats.
Okay, so you can have whatever you want for a number of boats in your yard?
Well, as long as you're not becoming a business in a residential neighborhood, but if you have, you know, a smaller putt-putt boat and you have a kayak or a canoe, you could put those behind the front face in your property. It's just that we're saying that some of the bigger boats, it's hard to maneuver to get it back there, so they would allow one to be in a different location.
I'm sorry, this is also a registered boat, so you're typically not registering a kayak or a canoe.
That's true.
Inflatable? That you can take the air out and put it in your garage.
Okay. Tough crowd. The building inspector is going to get near for once this meeting is closed. Go ahead. Anybody else? Okay. Zoning article number five.
Okay. I probably don't need to get up for this. Every year, we have a miscellaneous amendment article, which kind of puts together some minor miscellaneous amendments. The first one is we're going to add a new section of the bylaw, which is for stormwater management, and basically it's just going to be referencing that people need to adhere to the existing Yarmouth Stormwater Management Regulations. This is just something that was a clarification as part of our MS4 municipal stormwater system recommended by the town stormwater consultant. The second one is to modify the height of ancillary features in the Village Center Overlay District, Justin Village Center 2, to not be included within the height restriction limitation and by not being any more than four feet above that height. So, this is talking about things like chimneys and spires and cupolas and pediments and cornices and railings, so it gives people a little bit more height in other areas where you don't have human consumption, consumption, I'm sorry, human occupation. The third one is to eliminate the temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments as the moratorium is no longer applicable as we have a ban on such establishments in town, both in a general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. Last one is to modify the definition of temporary outdoor recreation. Basically, this is for allowing temporary outdoor recreation at town-owned properties as long as you get the approval from the board of selectmen for use of town-owned property process, and it eliminates the duration of nine days and clarifies the type of uses that would qualify. This is kind of to match some of the stuff we've been doing at the drive-in site and letting the board of selectmen determine what length of temporary outdoor recreation would be allowed. And that's it.
No comments? Z B A, any comments on?
Real quick, if I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Steve DeYoung, for those people at home that are interested. With respect to the B, the height limitations in the V, in the various V C O D districts, to me, that's just logical sense. You know, some of these architectural features that we want to put on buildings shouldn't cause a floor to come off a building that might otherwise have habitable space. So, I mean, to me, it's logical sense that we're trying to get in these clustered zones that we've talked about. We've recognized the need for those zones within our town and along the Route 28 strip. That's well and good. Let's hope that we're going to see some of the development like we're now currently seeing and so happy to see with the Old Cavalier Hotel site, but to potentially take off a habitable floor due to cornices or chimneys or spires would seem to be unfortunate at best. So, I think it's a very common sense approach to what may have been a problem or may become a problem if you don't change it. Thank you.
I've been asked for clarification by the planning director. You're just speaking to the V C O D, correct? The V C O D, Section 2, or for all of town in the future? Right now, we're just doing this one little area, but would it be, would it be your wish as one member of the Z B A that we relax this in other areas of the B2 district?
V C O D?
H D.
Well, I'm speaking not as a zoning member on that, but rather as a citizen of this town. I would speak to the V C O D as being the area where we would not want to see this sort of an architectural addition, cause the elimination of otherwise what could be habitable floor, habitable living space.
Okay, and I see Mr. G.
Mark Krilts, Building Commissioner. That V C O D section that was in there, we had a developer in who wanted to put rooftop units up and to screen the rooftop units using fencing so that you wouldn't see it from the street, you know, kind of beautify the HVAC units. Some of those HVAC units can be fairly large on buildings, and I'm not sure that four feet is quite enough. I'm sorry I'm bringing it up right now. I don't know if you can modify it, but as I'm looking around, I'm looking at some of these HVAC units, they're six feet, they're seven feet tall. The size of the unit, based on the size of the building, they're, you know, they're pretty, pretty sizable. We can go with four feet, see if it works, but I think that was the original intent, was to just be able to allow rooftop units and things like that to be up there and be shielded so that they're not viewable from the street.
I think a lot of this was also what Steve was talking about.
I don't think you're on.
Is that better? It's not, you know, eliminating a nice architectural detail for a building just because of that height requirement. So, what's happening is not necessarily somebody wanting to eliminate that habitable floor, but having a really squat cornice or having a detail that's less attractive than a building if we had an extra couple of feet where you could put that extra cornice or pediment on the building. It's to help the architecture as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a.
What she said.
You want to ask a question? Mark, we have a question?
I'm just wondering at this point, based on the discussion, why we're not considering the other three V C O D village centers as well? I know you mentioned you had someone stopping your office interested in Village Center 2, but we've got one, three, and four, and we're all looking at the same goals for those village centers.
Yeah, good point. I have no issue with it at all.
Well, you can bring that up as we go forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Britta, you commenting on Article 5?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. Are ancillary features a defined term?
Mark?
It is.
It's defined, actually, in the amendment.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, I'm going to call for a motion to close the public hearing so the board can discuss. So, mode. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. First, we've got to discuss comments and zoning article number one. Who would like to lead off before I take assignments? Saying none. Mr. Roach, would you like to start off?
Yes. I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just make sure all your mics are on, please.
Yeah. What's going on?
I think that we're looking at the amendments to the accessory bylaws, and we're looking at not an overwhelmingly response to these changes, but the possibilities that could arise as a result of some of these changes. I'm just concerned about raising the cap on the rentals, the rental fees that could be, could be charged, because I think that might just knock some of these people who have menial jobs who are not making $25 or $22 an hour but are working in accommodations and working two and three jobs and collecting through the winter. I'm wondering what impact that would have on some of these people. In regards to the family-related apartment, I think it's a great move coming forward. Everyone wants to be able to look at a quality of life and age in place, and I think that's what basically this will help a lot of people do in regards to having a caregiver, a personal family friend, someone that they've known for years and years and years and rely on. I think that would probably bring some units to the forefront, but it's a trial basis, and it's all coming down to the same thing. We're a seasonal community. If you can't make your business prosper in six months or seven months, then you're not going to be able to stay in business in regards to the capital that you have to keep it going. And these people, we don't have a year-round economy, so a lot of our workforce don't have the ability to go out and rent some of these higher-priced units. So, basically, I think that we're on the right path, and I hope to see some of these units come forward.
Okay. Chris, before I go to you, just going down the line, I'm just going to throw out an idea. We can always, instead of looking at black and white, we can always look at a trial. For example, there's nothing, we used to have sunset clauses on certain things. We'd allow people to do X or Y until X dates, and then it would just cease, and it would be up to town meeting again to say, "We want to continue it or change it." So, if you're in favor of keeping the affordability or in favor of ripping it off, you can always slap a one- or two-year moratorium on it and try to see what it would do for the town. That's all. Just something I was thinking about while I was not sleeping last night. Would that, please, give us any thoughts you may have on what, before us on Article number one?
I think just a couple of things. One was the, you know, the existing bylaw allows minimum of 10,000 square foot lots if we really want to make affordability a part of our community. Why set the limit at 15,000? Why not keep it down at 10,000? That's, that's one thing that I would, I would say. There was a woman that noted that microwaves, not stoves, are allowed, and I guess in New York.
Can we ask the building commissioner about that?
I was just going to ask, is that a state sanitary code? Do you know? Stove is a requirement?
It's funny, our 25-year-old is in New York. I've seen some of those studios.
I don't know what the, you know, the town bylaw says on it, but does a state sanitary code require any kind of stove?
Definition.
We've considered microwaves to be a cooking appliance because you can cook in them. That's what their, that's their sole purpose, is to warm up your food or heat up your food, or now, I guess, you can bake a cake in them. The definition of a dwelling unit is a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. That mimics the building code specifically. The state sanitation code, they, I'm not sure, I'm the municipal inspections director, but I don't run the health department, so, you know, if they don't have these things, I don't call them a dwelling unit. So, I think another part of it, too, is, well, I won't get into it, but I think that if, you know, if people also looked a little bit further in the bylaw or came to visit me, that also understand that you can have roommates, and you can have up to three roommates. And, you know, you don't need to necessarily create another dwelling unit. You can have people living in your house, and it's legal. There's nothing wrong with that according to our bylaw. So, there's a lot of ways to deal with this, but yes, in reference to the microwave, yes, it could be considered a cooking appliance.
Okay.
This, I just pointed this out.
Sorry, Brad. This is my, I started the conversation here.
So, for history, that definition comes from a definition of what has to be an affordable housing unit.
Okay.
That's where that came from.
Gotcha. That's the clarification I needed. Thank you, Mary.
So, would you care, Mary, if something's changed?
I guess that would be the follow-up question.
Are you talking to the Affordable Housing Coordinator? So, yes, put it in. That came, we really bumped that up when we were given to review a shed that was 250 square feet with no room for a kitchen. So, because we had nothing written down to deny that shed, we were, we were really worried that that shed would be permitted as an affordable accessory dwelling unit, which horrified, you know, the program.
That's the size of a hotel room.
Yeah. Well, don't get me started, right? So, that's why our standards have stoves specifically put in them. That's why the state does, too, and that's how it got into your bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for answering.
Thank you. Let me just check my notes here. Oh, yeah, it was suggested that this bylaw that passing would prohibit women from leaving their boyfriends. I got to vehemently disagree with that, because women are quite capable of living with other women and getting roommates. So, that's, that's not a problem at all. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Sir?
I agree with Chris on the, I don't know if we want to restrict it to 15,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet. It just opens it up to more units if you go to the 10,000 square feet, and I'd be in favor of doing that. That's the only comment I have. I think that rather than have the word stove, it could be a cooking appliance.
I think that would depend on the, because that comes from the affordable. So, I think stove would have to be there.
I don't think it would meet the requirements of the affordable units, and if you probably had something that was a cooking appliance, it probably would be acceptable from a building standpoint. I don't know if it's, the health department has anything special.
Maybe we'll look in at Mary. She doesn't know why.
They're talking about getting rid of the stove again, Mary. They're just making it a cooking appliance.
Smaller units, right, there are difficulties in finding a stove that will go in. You know, my problem with not having a stove is that it's not as healthy a living environment.
Quality of life.
I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to stop units coming online because they don't have a stove, but I don't think a stove is, because they, the mini stoves do come with a stove top. But, so, it's...
Does a grill meet the requirements of a stove?
No.
A stove has the baking portion. It's not a cooktop.
It's baking.
It has to have the oven.
It's the baking. So, if you don't put it in there, people aren't going to put it in there.
Yeah.
So, it's better for, if it is a small unit that can't fit a stove, for it to come before the Board of Appeals so they can explain why a stove won't fit. Hi, we're going to get them a really nice microwave, those combo microwave units that aren't really called a stove. But if you talk about something that's like a solid one-bedroom, or even you can make two bedrooms where there's going to be children, you, you might want to keep the stove in there and let them go to the Board of Appeals if they can't fit a stove in because of size or the rooms are odd-shaped or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other issue, the other issue, Mr. Chairman, that I was thinking about was, I know you're talking about reducing the size of the lot from 15,000 to 10,000. I think we ought to look at statistics here. Maybe Kathy can help us out on, how many lots are we talking about that would meet the requirements for 15,000 versus 10,000?
Very good, very good question. I do have that information. Right now, there's approximately 13,355 residential lots, which are either developed or vacant residential lots. Those that are greater than 10,000 square feet are a total of 10,709. Those that are greater than 15,000 are 5,603. So, you're cutting in half the number that would be eligible outright without getting some type of relief from the zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. I guess my concern is what was mentioned by one woman here. What will the town look like in 20 years? And the other issue is if we went with some kind of a sunset clause, now you're going to end up with some units, if they get installed, that could be considered nonconforming at some point, right?
It'd be grandfathered, but they would be...
Nonconforming.
Yes, but they'd be lawfully grandfathered.
You know, do you, do you really want to create that kind of a situation? And I, I think that the town is really going to get some sewers in here, and that's going to change the character of the community. And some of the things that we've heard, actually at the Board of Selectness meeting when we made a presentation with the Water Resources Unit, was that there is a big concern about changing the character of the community once we bring in a system. And I think the town is going to do that, and I think zoning needs to be very careful in how you loosen up things in terms of what the character of the town is. And there's been statements by the Water Resources Advisory Committee to the effect that we're relying on zoning to control the, the total build-out of the community for, with sewers. So, the sewer system as planned, or the program, we're only going to, we're buying into a treatment plant and a system that's only going to be able to accommodate so much flow. In the event 20 or 30 years down the road, when we go total build-out, if we don't have an, if we can't allow any more flow in, and we need to, we're going to have to buy more into the plant. So, as you, as the town grows and expands with its population, and you're allowing denser development, you're also cutting down on availability of flow to the plant.
Well said. Well said. Joe?
Just a couple of comments. I was pleased that people came out tonight. Thank you, for those who are still here, for taking the time to speak to us. A couple of things. One, I do think that the, the one thing that was brought up, the certification of income levels, I think is, is something that people might balk at, the renters. But I think we, there's only one way we can test their eligibility and, and therefore it's appropriate for affordable units. I, I disagree a little bit with Ms. Brita with regard to data. There are all sources of, all sorts of sources of information that Mary Wagon and the town has used that have been produced by Smart Growth, that have been produced by the Cape Cod Commission, the Housing Assistance Corporation. The evidence is there on the need for affordable housing here in Yarmouth and elsewhere on the Cape. And I think this amendment is rightfully put forward by the town to address that need here in the town. And I do think, again, the comment about the square footage, those figures we've gone through a couple of times now, and we've bounced around between 10,000 and 15,000. I think it's a question of density. We've, we've talked about that. Do we want to have 75% of the, all the lots in town eligible for affordable or accessory dwelling units? So, I don't. Do we want maybe 35% of the, of the eligible lots in town eligible for this kind of development? Yeah, that seems reasonable. The number will probably be much smaller who actually take advantage of it. Couple of technical questions. I, too, like Mark, am revisiting this. I mean, you keep putting it in front of us, and something else comes out that, oh gee, I didn't see that. And it was triggered by town council's comments on this, which I thought was what were all, were all good, but I don't think we've talked about what, what the definition of the owner is, and what if an owner is in trust? Lots of families here on the Cape move, because I'm invited to a certified planning presentation once a week as to how I can set up my estate and be eligible for Medicaid when I need to go to the nursing home, and I have to have my assets drawn down to $2,000. Separate subject. So, families move their homes into an estate, and the kids own the home, and they rent it back to mom and dad for a buck. The mom and dad do not own the property, but they live there, so they now are tenants. But they may want to have an accessory dwelling unit, because the nature of their living arrangement hasn't changed. It's just what's recorded in the registry of deeds.
I think if I can...
I'm not sure if town council offered any light on that.
I think, no, I think we had discussed that, and I think that was part of the reason why we had added in the ability, for circumstances like that, to allow it to be addressed through a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. I think if you explain that to them versus the variance, and that's where we ended up going with that.
Which is exactly my second point that I was going to make. I think the most important part about this amendment is that we've, we've allowed all of these things to go and be presented to the zoning Board of Appeals as a waiver. That gives great flexibility for all, all of these nuances for every person that might have a unique situation to go before the zoning Board of Appeals. So, I especially like that piece of it. The only other technical thing, again, going back and forth since I've been to all the meetings where we've discussed this, has to do with, in the article itself, I just noticed this, oh, where we insert, after, we're amending Section 407, 3.2, we're deleting the whole first paragraph. Permit procedure and requirements for affordable accessory units. Paragraph 1. We have a whole new paragraph. And the first sentence is one that I would recommend we adjust.
This is for the maximum rents permitted?
Maximum rents permitted, period. Affordable accessory unit, dwelling units shall be rented only to low-income households. I think we should strike "only to low-income households" and not have a characterization by us about the household that might be renting it. We don't need that language. It's superfluous. We're defining all of the other things that make this particular provision work. It's an adjective.
Which one are you talking about?
The very first sentence.
Yeah?
Affordable accessory dwelling units shall be rented for a period of not less than a year. I don't think we need to have the clarifier "only to low-income households." I think it's an adjective, and unfortunately, I think it's a label that is an unfortunate one, that people lop onto Section 8, they lop onto any kind of affordable housing, and I don't, I would like not to be a party to that language.
Okay. Is that it? Is that a period?
That's it, yep.
All right. Mr. B?
By the time we get to town meeting, I promise I won't have any other comments.
Oh, you say that now.
Yeah, I say that now. How many more meetings do we have?
Jim will have them.
We're moving zoning probably till October, so you'll have more time.
When do they close comments? When do we have to print it?
Mr. B?
The, the point that Mr. Saban brought up, that we should be calling this as an affordable accessory dwelling bylaw, I think is apropos, because that's basically what we're, what our, I think our goal is. And so, we should emphasize it. It's stated a couple of times already in the, in the suggested new language that, that appears in the, in the amendment, and so, it, it should be clarified right from the top of the, top of the item, that it should be called affordable at the beginning. Joanne and I both have attended the Housing Institute both the last two years, and we certainly have, have seen and heard many examples, not only within our town, but other, other communities of the, of the need for better affordability and, and accessory, accessory units. To the issue of the lot size, I do agree with Joanne that the 15,000 square feet does limit, does place a little bit of a limit on what can be actually built, but it also reflects the idea of, of septic loading. If you build another unit on, on a lot and there isn't, there isn't room to, to satisfy sideline and front and back limits and setbacks, the 15,000 allows you to have, have units on larger lots, and by virtue of adding another unit, you get a new septic evaluation of what is allowable on that, on that property. So, in that sense. But also in the idea of septic, Lee has brought up the point that with the sewer plan, sewer program, that program is projected as a 40-year program. So, much of, much of this concern about septic will, will evaporate once that full plan goes into, into effect. But it's going to take 40, 40 years to get there. And so, it, it makes sense to have some limitation at the present time and, and use that as a guide until the full plan, full sewer program is in effect.
Is that it? Okay.
Can I make a quick comment in regards to 10 and 15?
Usually the, the planning board, it's, it's closed, Jim. We've closed it.
I'll send you a memo then.
Okay.
It's quicker if I just say that instead of...
Jim.
Keep your footprint the same. You can still go $10,000.
Jim, you sat up here for a long while. Thank you. I'm just going to try to whittle this down. The only item we've seen, I've heard from the six of you that we have a quote-unquote "problem" with is the lot size. Is there anything else that is jumping out at me that I've missed? I've heard people say, "I like 15." I've heard people say, "I like 10." I have heard nothing about the ripping the cap law for affordability and allowing market, market influences to take over. Am I reading the board well on that? Yes, okay. Do I see anything as, the three things before us is we can vote to approve the 10,000, we can vote to try to make it larger, 15,000, we can vote to keep it at 15, vote it down to 10, or do some kind of combination with some kind of sunset clause.
Good question. So, I was going to clarify this at town meeting. So, let's just say we, it went to town meeting as 10,000. They can make it more restrictive to 15, but you can't go backwards. Is that correct?
No, you, it can only...
You can't be more restrictive.
You got to make it, right, you got to make it less restrictive.
Right. So, they could go backwards.
So, you can go from 15 to 10, you can't go from 10 to 15.
Right, right. But you could go from having rent restrictions to no rent restrictions at town meeting.
Right. Just, you know, a little political...
All to be confirmed by town council, but that's my understanding.
Right. But I just, again, I think a, I still like the sunset clause to see what the town would do. A lot of us have made zoning articles, and nothing's happened. We've had 10, 15, 20 years of just people having the right to do something and not doing it. If you put a short, open window in there and say, "Go," so long as it meets all the requirements and people go through the various steps, then he or she will be allowed to build it, and then at that point, the window will close, and it'll be up to town meeting to say, "Yes, you want to continue this? We love what's happening?" Or, "No, stop. Put on the brakes." So, are you, the reason why I'm only looking at you is you're a town employee. Do you have something to say, or you're just yawning? I was hoping you was yawning. Okay.
Something to consider with the sunset clause, as Lee brought up, you would be creating some pre-existing nonconforming uses in any... some pre-existing non-conforming uses and any further development of those pre-existing non-conforming uses would also require a visit to the zoning board of appeals.
Agreed.
So I don't know if that's something you've given consideration to already.
I don't have a problem with that because it's happening all the time now.
Right.
I'm just, I'm sort of throwing, I'm thinking of throwing down the gauntlet, saying, "If people want to do this, let's see what the town will do as citizens for 24 months." And it also keeps Lee's idea and Tom's idea of, "Look, we have sewers in the future," of right there on the back burner. That's just, again, I'm one member of the board. I'll take any kind of motion you'd like to make.
I think Joanne had one other comment that I don't, about we're striking that language and I don't know whether you guys.
Oh, striking out the low-income.
I like that, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
I agree with that.
Okay.
There was also a couple edits from town council.
That's right.
I just want to make sure that if you make an amendment that you're including, some of, two of them were very grammatical. And then she did say that that one section in item 12, the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit may not be rented at the same time. She thought that might be a little bit redundant. I don't think it harms emphasis. It's totally up to you guys to take it out or leave it in. Because you have to, it has to be your primary residence.
I like it in there, myself.
Town council said you could leave it in for emphasis or take it out.
I'm sorry, I was reading something else.
That's okay. It's just the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit may not be rented at the same time.
Oh.
Which is a little redundant because we're saying you have to be a resident.
One of the, or the other.
Right, right.
Actually a 10.
So this is just an emphasis or it could be eliminated? So if you make any decisions, just make sure to include those types of comments in your motion.
Besides that, the one thing, if we are going to have a fight on town meeting floor, which is fine, we all have scars and whip marks, that's what we do, I would like to put in the sunset clause because, again, I can't add it at town meeting, make it more restrictive. However, it can be voted out by two-thirds vote, two-thirds and one person's vote. And I think that calmer heads on town meeting floor would like that kind of provision. So if somebody wants to make a motion to put all this in, how you'd like to see it, plus a sunset clause to go to two years from passage at town meeting.
Is that enough time?
I don't think it's enough time.
You're a builder.
Don't think it's enough.
Yeah, that's three.
You know, five years.
Shut in a little.
Five.
Five is great.
I think five is too long.
I wouldn't put it in myself, but I would put five.
Well, if you don't put it in, then it can't be put.
Then you have to change it through another zoning amendment and you can get another flavor of how the community feels, where we stand with sewers, and it's another discussion topic. Maybe you want to do more in five years and start looking at something different. Maybe we don't.
But look at what we have now over that period of time that has been changed relative to affordable and family-related. Very, very few.
Right.
All right. I've never built a structure before. Would three years be better, five years?
I think five. It takes time for people to understand it, to know what they want to do. The economy fluctuates, people's own finances fluctuate with family emergencies, so.
I'm just thinking ahead as a chess player, a number of months ahead, and I'd rather have something in there so the town meeting has something to take out because I can't put it back in.
I'd like, I could, I'm happy with putting a sunset clause. I'd want it to be at least five years. You know, we all know at our age, time starts to fly.
Yeah.
So.
At our age.
The one question I would ask, do we want it?
Feel it.
Do we want a sunset clause applied to both family and affordable?
Good question. I think you're just talking the affordable, right?
Just the affordable.
Are you talking just affordable?
Good question.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
So are you looking for a motion?
I am.
What if it is?
I am.
We'll try this.
So we've got three pieces then?
We have your, we have a sunset, we have a taking out of the verbiage of low-income. We have the corrections and we still have, we're taking it down to 10,000.
I'd leave the 15,000.
Okay.
You do have the ability to special permit exception.
Yeah, you can go to ZBA anytime you want.
Right. So I'd say 15,000 stay and then it can be, like we said, changed down on town meeting floor if needed. So I'd make a motion. I don't know if I'm going to get this all in here. Help me out, anybody that needs to. So we're going to.
Kathy, make, be of agreement.
We're going to take the acceptance, the language that she has in the draft as of February 14, 2019.
It's a draft.
Except for the verbiage that Joanne would like out.
Except for that one line. We cross out the, cross out the "only to low-income households." So the sentence would read, "Affordable accessory dwelling units shall be rented for periods not less than one year."
Okay.
Okay.
You want a sunset clause of five years from the date of town meeting, 2019, on the accessible dwelling units?
The affordable.
Affordable.
Affordable, the affordable.
Need some coffee.
Mr. Chairman, the distinction between affordable and accessory, are we going to do anything in that area? Are we going to call it affordable accessory or just accessory?
Yeah, I'd say that it's, as it's written, anything that is accessory is automatically affordable, so to have to call it affordable seems.
But it's also family-related, which you may not charge your rent at all. So to name the whole thing affordable.
Okay. Understood, all right.
I withdraw.
Okay. I think I've got everything in there. Any other comments before I ask for a second?
My only comment is, we're scheduled to go before, and this is just a general comment, March 5th before the board's selectment. Do you want to make these edits and maybe meet next Wednesday so we have a meeting before the board's selectment so you guys can see the final thing and then do a final vote? Or are you planning on doing everything tonight? I'm just, these changes haven't formally been made, so to vote on it, you won't have like draft number three or whatever that you're approving.
Why don't I just get a motion on the floor, have it seconded, and we'll just put it there before we accept or deny and move on to town meeting. Okay? All right. Let's get it, just go, I just need a second, too.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments on changing the wording and not necessarily approving this going forward to the BOs on 3/5/19? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstained? Okay. Let's go to signage two. We had comments from the ZBA.
Pump toppers, Tom.
Pump toppers. And rolling signs. We didn't want to do pump toppers for a reason. I'm trying to remember what. Mr. Barron, you sat in on the ZBA hearing. Was there, I know the reason the ZBA returned it down.
Yes, the comment at the time was too much proliferation of signs. The idea of pump toppers is still a very reasonable endeavor as Mr. DeYoung described. The freestanding sign was the one that was really brought forward from ZBA to planning as an issue and we've addressed that, but the pump toppers were sort of left on the sidelines.
There's two ways we can go. We can move this forward and see how the town reacts and see if we get any other people wanting to have the pump toppers or we can just allow the remaining gas stations in town, which I think there are only five. Could be six.
We have a lot of gas stations. We have at least a dozen.
Close to eight. We have a dozen?
Yes, think about it.
I'll think. I'm still looking at the Walgreens. I pull into my Sunoco station and they say, "Sir, can I get your drugs?" I'm like, "Oh, no, I want it regular." I'm sorry. We can keep it where it is and see if we have any other pushback going forward or we can change this as well. What say ye, board?
Well, what's the downside of adding the pump toppers? Where the management can change the price of the gallons per gas, you know, from the inside the building. I mean.
White letters only typing?
Talking about, what are they, maybe seven by seven or eight by eight?
Well, sometimes some of the pump toppers get to be larger so they can have branded messages upside because a lot of the co-ventures, which is a gas station and Cumberland Farms, for example, it's called a co-venture, they get the signage up there that you can buy two Brad Goodwin bars for the price of one. And now all of a sudden, you have the outdoor advertising and I think that's where you get the kind of the flip of it's not just the price.
Well, that's something I wouldn't want to see.
Yeah, that was the tenor of the argument before the ZBA of too much proliferation of signs. And I don't, specifically, there was nothing against the idea of the pump toppers other than it would generate the opportunity to have that proliferation for secondary advertising, et cetera. So.
We did have language in there originally, if I can read it for you guys. Gas pumps may have electronic messages on top of the pumps to denote gas prices for up to four different gas types in a single row with a maximum character height of four inches.
Yeah, there you go. That would be practical.
Do you like to add that back in?
That would be practical.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
So that'll be part of the motion?
Okay. Getting into the electric. All right. So I guess I'm going to stay away from the rolling signs for now. Let's just go with the gas toppers. I need a motion to take zoning article number two, add in the verbiage that Kathy just shared and make a motion and we will.
So moved.
Second.
A motion.
You made it easy.
There we go. All in favor of going ahead and presenting this on March 5th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstained? Okay. Thank you for your help on that, Kathy. That was really a nice step in. Entertainment, we didn't have, I don't think, anything. I think, I'm looking at my notes here. We had a question about the historic cultural center, but that was answered. I don't think we had any problems with this solved together. Calling for a motion to accept zoning article number three.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else? Okay. Four. I have no boating blood in my body, but this is going to be some fun. We had a question about charging fees. We had.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The signage also had some edits. Did you, in that motion, it was this edit?
We took the motions, we took, the way you typed it in.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
The way you typed it in plus what you just added.
Okay, so draft, okay, thank you so much. Plus adding, okay, thank you.
Zoning article four, we had a question on should we charge fees? Should we leave it exactly the way it is? Should we put a restriction on it of 35 or 36 feet or less? And that's what we have. So I'll open it up to the boaters in the group.
No fees.
Okay.
No fees.
We already pay an excise tax.
I don't need it.
I got no skin in this game.
For sure.
No fees, but I think a limit on the size of the boat makes a lot of sense.
Again, dumb question. Are we measuring the size of the boat or the size of the trailer?
Size of the boat.
Size of the boat. So you're now going to be in charge.
Boat measuring.
To not only seeing if it's one boat in front of the building or behind the building, whether it's 35 feet or 36 feet or less.
It's on the registration. It should be on the registration, the LOA length overall, if I'm reading the registrations correctly. So it doesn't need to take a tape measure.
You have access to that information? He says, looking to the building commissioner in the audience? Okay.
Show me your registration. Your LOA.
Here we go.
Well, I would use, I would put in the word "trailable" somewhere in there because that effectively was one of the comments that we did get and I believe Mr. Grill's also is supportive of the issue of trailable boats.
All boats that are going to get to your house, not to be a smartass, are going to be trailered.
Right.
Right? That's how they're going to get there.
Could be dry dock.
The issue was, for example, like I have a sailboat, so when you bring a sailboat to your house, you can put it on stands. So you don't have, it doesn't have to sit in that large special trailer. So other boats can sit, a powerboat or something can sit on their trailer, sailboats can sit on stands. I think that was what he was mentioning.
Okay. So I'm getting the flavor that the board would like to keep the word "trailer" out and just measure the boat of at least, now here's up to you, do you want 36 or 35 feet?
Even.
Let's see, I didn't hear you.
Even number.
Even number, so 36 feet?
36.
I think the constraint, that makes a lot of sense. The constraint is going to be the roadway. I mean, there's only a couple of companies on the Cape that could haul a boat of that size and they're going to be restricted by the 10-foot width of the roadway. So you just can't, you can't haul by land.
And they're going to be restricted by the lot size, too.
Yeah. I think, 35 is fine. You'll see some, there's some right down the street from you, Tom. It's all shrunk wrap, but I would estimate that boat's at least a 30, 35 footer.
Oh, yeah.
And it's on stanchions, it's on blocks.
Is length overall?
It won't be, it will not be a Queen Mary.
Do we need?
I was just going to check. Can I change my mind? I don't think a size restriction is necessary.
I think it's going to be limited by how it gets to.
By a lot, but most boats are not huge that are going to be stored in a home anyways. I just, I think that that's just adding a regulation that's not necessary.
I think, let this amendment, this amendment just.
Let it work.
Let it work. Exactly.
To leave it as is.
Look at it again. If it comes up relative to size, we'll have to look at it in the future, but again, I wouldn't put any, any.
Okay. Before I, I'm looking back to town employee before. Any comments, sir? Okay.
Do we care about Old Kings Highway or anyplace? Nothing. We're going to keep it exactly the way the article is.
Well, they would have to go before Old Kings Highway, wouldn't they?
Right. There was just some question as to whether we wanted to restrict this exception, this is a question that was asked of me, to not include Old Kings Highway or our historic districts. Or whether we want to allow this exception of the boat location anywhere, anywhere, any residential lot in town, which is the way it's written.
How Long Bass River is the national historic district.
Right.
So you're going to tell those folks that you can't.
I'm not telling anybody anything. I'm just telling you what somebody asked me.
We'll look at that.
I'm just telling you what someone, because I mean, you may find that when you get there, there's people from Yarmouth Port who are not as excited about having the boats as I think people probably in the southern side are.
I don't think we're going to suddenly see a ton of boats being parked in yards because we passed this bylaw. So I think what we have, what do you have? You going to prove me wrong?
My statistics from just last year alone.
If you're going to read.
Yeah. Data.
Where's Kathy? Where's the clock?
All right. From January 1st to 2018 to December 31st to 2018, we had 28 violations. I have every address of the violations here. On average, there are two and a half hours to deal with each one. That includes going to the site, confirming there's a violation, writing the violation notice, putting it in the mail, paying for the postage, which has to go regular mail and certified mail.
Oh, Jesus.
And then, once it's confirmed or once, you know, then there's some, most, some people refuse to respond to that, so I got to send them another pretty letter and then I got to send them a third letter and then usually the ticket gets their attention. That's all costs of the town.
What's the violations?
They're in violation of the zoning bylaw where they're locating the boat.
Just where they're located.
Generally, right. So, and, you know, they have reasonable arguments why they can't store their boat in their backyard. They've got a tree in the way, they're fencing, you know, they have a pool, and they can't put it back there. So this was just a recommendation that, you know, it took, there was, there's over 70 hours in just last summer alone. I included the whole year just to see if there were any others, but, and there's been a few, but for the most part, that's a lot of time during our busiest time of the year.
I'm all for efficiency and less paperwork, so I completely agree with you. When you saw these violations, how big were the boats? Were not...
Some were inflatables that were 12 feet long, and some of them were 28 foot...
Queen Marys.
With a tent over them.
I think that was the concern.
Qualify as a Queen Mary. So, you know, in some people's eyes, they're a Queen Mary. There's just an awful lot of time for, you know, even if I fine them, they never pay the fines, they end up going to court, and they just dismiss, and they're told to move their boat, so. And then I have to go to court, and I have to sit there for half a day waiting my turn. So it, just something to consider if the town says, no, we don't want that, and so be it, I'll just keep doing what I'm doing.
No, we're just trying to figure out if size matters. Here we go. Seeing that we're not going to make any changes, I'm going to call for a vote to approve article four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
When you say approve, you're recommending?
I don't mean recommend, I'm not...
Thank you, I just want to be sure that these, everything you're saying is recommending these with these changes.
It's sort of like apartment units, ADUs, all the rest, it's just all the same thing. Zoning article five, I think we had one comment. No, just Mr. Young said he was happy to see it happen.
Well, about adding the ancillary height exception to all of the VCOD.
All the VCODs.
Yes. Do you want to make that change here, or you want to keep it?
Do like we did before, make the change, and then just approve it here, so she doesn't have to do all the, another meeting with us?
But you've got, again, in VCO, VCO three, VCOD number three, you do have a height, availability of 65, do you want to go to 69? I mean...
That's just, just very specifically for water parks, but you're right.
Right, but there is a chance, I'm just saying, I just...
You could exclude, I don't know.
If you're that far back, I wouldn't want to exclude it, but I just want to bring it up on camera and on town, on town time. I have no problem making, recommending making that change if the board does across the entire VCOD, or just keeping it at section two, which deals with housing and deals with immediate question and comment by developers in the second zone. How does the board feel?
I'd like to see it just be all VCOD.
I'd too.
As one of the architects of the VCOD.
I agree.
I agree. Yeah, make it a uniform policy all the way through.
Okay, let's have a motion.
I move that we make it for all of the VCOD zones.
Made by Mr. B, second by Mr. V. Any other comments?
Mark's comment about six feet, HVAC units sometimes being more than four feet.
I forgot Mark's comment.
Do we want to change that to no more than six feet?
The, you have to consider this, too. You're not looking at this straight on, you'd be looking at it from down at street level. You're six feet, it's already 30-some-odd feet near, let's just say, and you're adding to that. So the angle, adding the four feet would be...
And it would have to be shielded, right?
All right.
Yeah, or screening for mechanical equipment, yeah. I mean, it's part of the, I mean, if any VCOD project would come to you guys, and that's part of the things of screening.
Okay, all right, so no need to change that.
Well, we wanted to go to six feet.
I don't think, I mean, if you want to change it to six feet, I don't think it's a huge deal.
People are very sensitive to heights in town, so I think if we, if four feet does it, why go to six feet? And I think four feet does it.
And could someone then go to ZBA and get a waiver if it were six?
It would be a variance.
Or would it be a variance?
It would be a variance.
Yeah, variance.
And that test is more difficult, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, given the lawyers that are on the board.
Yes. Mr. DeYoung, Mr. Agarwal.
Well, he did recommend six or seven feet, didn't he?
He said eight, but I don't know, I think eight's a little high.
Six to eight?
Do you want to keep it at four, or you want to go to six? Why don't we just go to four, and we're doing the entire zone, and we'll go from there?
Town meeting, if they want to go to six?
It's less restrictive.
Less restrictive, you can go to six, so it gives you the opportunity.
What was that fellow looking for, Kathy, in regards to VCOD two?
I thought it had to do with either the railing on a deck that they wanted to have.
Parapet wall or something.
And also pediments.
That was part of it, but also taking into consideration that some of those taller buildings now have to have an elevator in them, and the top of the elevator has to have a shaft on the roof, and it's going to be more than four feet tall, I can guarantee you that. So for them to comply with the building code, they're now going to have to come for a variance from the zoning board of appeals, something to consider. I don't know the standard height of an elevator shaft above a roof line, but, you know, they're not, they're more than four feet.
Yeah, they're at least eight. I was about to say, we're building one in our church in 6A, and it's definitely eight feet, if not 10, but I don't want to give them 10.
Six foot would be more in keeping with the height of a person, maintenance person who would have to go and service the equipment, too.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, the equipment, the equipment might not be itself six feet, but for safety reasons, you would, you would have a person who going up to service that equipment might, might need the safety railings, et cetera.
Railings are 42 inches.
Yeah.
This was actually a flat roof, and they had slopes, you know, like a faux roof in the front, like a parapet, and then it was behind that parapet, but they needed the full height of the, of what the bylaw allows in order to create dwelling units, and then they needed the extra height. So, you know, that's why this came up, and he said maybe it's a good idea to try to get that changed, which is why it's here.
Would you consider mechanic, it says mechanical equipment to be the elevator?
Yes, that's a mechanical.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we didn't need to edit that.
Sure.
Why don't we go to eight feet, then?
Yeah, I would think.
If somebody wants to ask what we're doing, and I or one of the other members here on the board can easily say, we're looking to, if they've put in elevator shafts, that you're going to need the height. And we're talking about mechanical uses, not another livable floor.
And it does get reviewed by us, the planning board, all VCOD projects.
So, is that, we didn't make a motion yet, did we?
But we did make a motion, I think it was, and maybe it can be amended to recommend that draft, one, amended to include...
Entire zone.
The entire zone.
Mechanicals.
And maximum height of eight feet.
Yeah. Is that okay? For the people who made it, Mr. B and Mr. V?
I agree, so moved.
Okay.
Excellent motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. All right. We have another meeting probably coming up next Wednesday before we move on any further. Is this room available next Wednesday?
Yes.
Can we be here next Wednesday? Do you want to make, is, do you want to make it 5:00, or do you want to do 5:30?
Whatever works for you guys.
Chris, I'm looking at you, I know you have to be somewhere usually.
No, I'm good, I don't teach Wednesdays this semester, so I'm good.
Okay. Next Wednesday, would the board like to meet at 5:00 instead of 5:30? I'm just asking.
Do it with me.
Is that okay? Everybody all right? Can you do 5:00?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I didn't know, I mean, just, I just, again, I'm being greedy because I'm going to be around the corner at, you know...
What's the date, the 20, is that the 27th?
It is.
Okay.
We have time to post a meeting. I don't think we need you, but if you're, if you're around in your new offices?
I have class.
You do?
So I think what I'll have is the draft memo that goes to the board of selectmen along with the final edits, and then you guys can look at that and tweak it, and hopefully it won't be a particularly long meeting, and we'll...
So what I'm going to do is, when we, next week, we'll tackle all five of those, and we'll assign who's going to speak to them and who's going to not speak to them. So if you don't show up, you're going to be defending all the articles on the meeting floor.
That's usually how it's done, yes.
It is. So why don't we move on to bylaw chapter 171?
Say five. On the 27th.
Yes.
I think we had talked about this a long time ago, when we started looking at making amendments to the sub, the rules and regulations that govern the subdivision of land, came across a general bylaw that basically mimicked the rules and regulations but didn't have all the changes to it over the years. I talked to town council about it, and she's like, there's no need for you to have a general bylaw, you're already given the authority to create rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land through Mass General Law, chapter 41, section 81Q, so you can just repeal that bylaw. So we're just repealing a general bylaw. We still get to do, make all of our amendments through public hearing like we have, all along for the rules and regulations. And I think we will end up needing to take a look at those with regard to stormwater and updating those probably in the next year or so, to be in line with the MS4.
Just a point of clarification, is the BOE's going to give us another slide on the, in the town meeting?
We have an actual article, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
We do, okay.
Yep. I just, I do need a motion to recommend to the board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're just mowing them down. Look at you.
We've been talking about it for a long time.
We have.
I mean, not, not this one, but everything.
And on the preparedness workshop update, any way to get it on a Saturday or Sunday like I asked?
No.
No.
Well, you don't have to. Let's put it...
When is the date for it?
It's Friday, March 22nd, and you, we're going to have it at La Russo Lodge, because I guess this room wasn't going to be quite big enough.
It's a sandwich, I think.
No, here at Flex Pond.
Flex Pond.
Oh, I'm thinking La Russo, they're camp around way up there. I just, okay.
Not every planning board member needs to attend, so maybe, you know, depending on your availability, maybe we can decide maybe three to four members. I know Norm indicated to me that he was going to be attending, which is good because he's also hit CEDC. It might be good for Toms with the Affordable Housing Trust and Community, Housing Committee, if you guys could make it, and like, you know, if one other person wants to do it.
I would try.
Is that, I'm sorry?
I would try. She already threw you in. The two Toms.
I did, I threw you in, you're in there.
What time is it from?
A formal invitation will go out, this is an RSVP, and this is why I'm kind of wondering who might actually be doing it. We're looking to get 40 people, it's going to be a combination, there's going to be some town staff that hit different departments, but we also want to get different members of the community with different expertise and concerns to start looking at our vulnerability assessment, and then coming up with actual projects to address, and this is what it says, climate change. So that's kind of what it is. So if we can select four, I can put them in, and you'll get a formal invitation, so...
Kyle's already sent out invitations to CEDC.
Yeah, we're trying to find out who from, because there was three groups that had said you would participate, the planning board, CEDC, and Conservation Commission. So we're trying to get like three, three people, four people from each of those to pepper around in the different groups. So Joanne's a good...
Yeah, I'm good for the choices.
Norm's a good. Tom B's a good. Tom R's a question mark.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else with interest? I mean...
I just want to know the time, so I can ask for the time.
Oh, it's like...
Is it nine to 4:00?
It's like nine to 4:30, yeah.
I knew it was a day, I didn't know if it was eight to five, nine to 4:30. I just have to ask for time.
It might be 8:30, but it's 8:30, so do you want, you want an invite?
Yeah, I just have to ask for time off.
I mean, I can send invites to everybody, but if you're not going to come, then I know that I can ask somebody else.
Send something out?
Yes, so it'll be a formal invite.
March 22nd, I can't do it.
Okay.
Nope.
So, they're probably working.
Another board meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to go.
Okay.
I'd like to be a part of that, I'm just not sure my commitment will be that day.
Joanne is stuttering over there, is that?
I wanted to go to this, and I, just remembering, I've got...
You're going to be on Marco Island?
No, I'm a member of a board of trustees at my college.
You're very busy.
You went to what, University of Florida?
I went.
Alahasi?
Marco Island campus.
Thank you for the update. Joe looks at her calendar. Minutes of January 16th, 2019. We have enough people here. Any problems, edits, changes?
Let's see if I was there.
You were not.
No, that's very funny.
You and Lee were not.
He was making a...
I move as, move the minutes of January 16th as written.
Have a motion on the floor in a second, any other comments, corrections? None being heard, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
So Lee, Chris.
Five oh two. All right. Board of Appeals, we got that sent to us. Committee updates, Joanne, you're coming down the freeway down there with the money. You probably have some update for us?
I do. The Capitol Budget Committee has met several times since we last met. We have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen on, the public hearing for the budget is Tuesday of next week, and we'll be presenting our recommendations for the, for the Capitol Budget. So we've put a lot of time into public presentation and the like, and it's the annual allocation of a relatively small amount, one and a half million dollars. But we also do look at all the roadway improvements, DPW facility, so the total bottom line is around $18 million worth of wow capital investment that we're proposing.
I wish Mr. Saban was still here, he'd agree, it's one of the toughest committees you can ever volunteer for. Congratulations, and God bless all the stuff to do.
Well, we have a committee, it's actually not, it's, 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 membership is really quite good, so makes it easier.
It's a tough group, though. Congratulations, it's a tough road to hoe. Mr. B?
Gee, we just got done talking about housing, so I don't have, I don't have a whole lot to offer on that subject.
Nothing, okay? Lee or Norm, anybody?
Nothing, nothing new.
Mr. B?
No, does I review? Sailing right along, sailing right along.
We had a drive-in site utilization committee meeting, and Kathy has all the information. We had a drive-in site utilization committee meeting, and Kathy has all the information. I don't know how, how far you want to, detail you want to go into it, Kathy, but I think it's good to bring the board on.
No, um, there is, and it's going to be on the board of selectmen agenda for Tuesday night, is another country festival to be held at the drive-in site for July twentieth and July twenty-first. So we are looking at doing some interim improvements at the drive-in site, too. There's a large pile there of kind of mulch and organic area that's from the wood chippings from my, probably decades of storm debris that's been chipped there. Unfortunately, it's not really conducive to parking on or walking on. It's very spongy, so we're looking at having that removed. And there's also a bunch of stones that have been temporarily stored there for a future artificial reef that's kind of like right where they want to do some of their parking. So we worked with the DPW to come up with a cost estimate for that. We're going to be going to CEDC on Monday, asking for some tourism revenue preservation funds for physical improvements to, to address those before that country festival. So hopefully everything goes good on Tuesday, and everything goes good on Monday, and we can get the work done.